Morning, Todd.
Morning.
All right, it is 9:00 a.m. and I am going to call our meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Natalie, would you like to lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America. I am nation under God, and I am a small but very small justice for all.
Thought JT was gonna pick me out there.
Item number two, call for public comment. We are still giving individuals the opportunity to call in on items that are not on the agenda that will be discussed during the open part of our meeting. The two phone numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297. Also, we are streaming live Cottington SD on YouTube. If you have a cellphone, you may want to silence that. Item number three, we'll move on to a conflict of interest items on the agenda. Is there any for the fellow commissioners?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
All right, item number four then, action to approve the August 4th agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vandus and second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Action to approve the minutes of the July 28th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Vandus. And any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. And since we did slate it for 9:00 a.m., a public auction on the front steps of the courthouse for three pieces of tax deed property, the front steps has been moved to the commission chambers just for acoustic reasons. And we will, I know we have some bidders out there. Is Carol gonna be here as well?
There are bidders over there, that's good. My voice would carry outside.
Probably.
Yeah.
Maybe I should just say clerking reasons. Both.
Morning.
Morning, everyone.
So man, we got, we got all kinds of bidders here this morning.
Right, so do you want to announce the pieces of property Cindy and the order? Or how do you want to proceed with that?
Um, yeah, well, let's start with record number 5309, 5232, and then 735, which is the piece in Elmira Township. The first two properties are in the town of Wallace. One is lot nine in block 23 of Wallace Village. It is on Phelps Street between Eighth and Seventh Avenue. It is an empty lot. Approximate lot size is 52.8 feet by 132 feet. Last appraised as non-ag. It was last appraised at $460. County took tax deed September 19th, 2019. The opening bid will be $200 on that one. At the board's next meeting, next Tuesday, we will approve the sale and then you will authorize me to issue quitclaim deeds for everything that is sold. The second piece is also in Wallace. It's the north 67 feet of Lot 1 in Block 6 of Wallace Village, near the corner of Wallace Street and Sixth Avenue. It's an empty lot. Approximate lot size is 67 feet by 22.02 feet. Assessed as non-ag. Last appraised value was $102. County also took this piece on September 19th, 2019. The opening bid per the appraised value is $50. And the last piece has got a very long legal that I'm not going to read. It's in Elmira Township. It's an empty lot, just east of Interstate 29, approximately .14 acres in size. Last appraised assessed as ag land. Last appraised value was $184. The opening bid and the appraised value is $50 for this auction. Successful bidders need to remit their payments to the county treasurer by 3:00 p.m. this afternoon. It'll be the total bid price plus $30 for a recording fee. So we will record the deed for you. And if you'd like to bid on a piece of property, I just need your name to start the bidding process as soon as Troy calls for the first bid. So let's start with record number 5309.
5309, go ahead and read this Cindy.
Yes, go ahead and read that.
All delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest are abated and are not the responsibility of the new owner of the deed. All special assessments, except for delinquent municipal special assessments, SDCL 10-25-12 are abated from the property. Only municipal special assessments, delinquent current and future, stay with the property and are the responsibility of the new owner. As per South Dakota Codified Law 10-25-12, the property is also subject to any claim that the state may have in the property for taxes, liens, or encumbrances. It is also presumed that existing federal liens remain against the property. Any information, questions, negotiations on these liens need to be directed to the appropriate form of government, not Cottington County. The issuance of a tax deed pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 10-25-12 appears to release all other liens of record against the property, not the person. Examples of this are county liens, mechanic liens, special assessments of all non-municipal governments, judgments, and mortgages. Cottington County makes no guarantee of absolute fee, simple marketable title to the property. It is recommended by the marketable title standards that the purchaser of a county quitclaim deed pursue a quiet title action in order to acquire marketable title to the property. That's under South Dakota Codified Law 43-30, Title Standards 26-01 and 26-02. In addition to your bid price, you will also submit a deed recording fee of $30. The payment must be remitted to the Cottington County Treasurer by 3:00 p.m. today. The payment can be in the form of cash, cashier's check, or official bank check or credit card. The bids will be reviewed by the Cottington County Board of Commission at their August 11th, 2020 meeting. If the bids are accepted and approved by the board, the chairman will issue the quitclaim deed in the new owner's name, register it at the Register of Deeds office, and the original will be mailed to the new property owners under or after that recording. Okay?
We just need to determine how we're gonna go up in increments if we have more than one bid. So the first piece of property we've got, the opening bid is $200. What do you think? What kind of increments do you wanna go up in?
What have we typically done before? Do you remember?
We never did. We just asked if there's more bids.
Okay, okay. We have done it in increments before. But yeah, that's fine, to do it that way too.
If we're getting $1 increments, we'll probably have to make a decision. But we'll start this first one off. This is number 5309, is that right Cindy?
Correct. The opening bid is $200.
Opening bid is $200 for that. You have an opening bid?
This is the piece on the screen up there.
Okay, have an opening bid? Any other bids? What's your bid? What is your bid?
Okay, so what's his name?
First bid at 200.
Okay.
Kyle has a first bid at 200.
Uh, what's your last name? Okay.
Okay, what's your name sir?
Arlen Mastel.
Arlen Mastel, what's your bid, Arlen? Well, should we do $25 increments?
10, 20, yeah.
I, I don't think 20.
225?
Okay.
250? 275? 300? 325? 350? 375? 4? 425? 450?
Who's that, who's that 450?
He does.
Okay, all right.
475? 500? 525? 550? 575? 6? 625? 650? 675? Uh, okay, uh, 700? 725? 750? 775? 800? 825? 850? 875? 900? 925? 950? 975? 1,000? 1,025? 1,050? 1,075? 1,000? 1,100? 1,100? 1,175? Uh, 1,200? 1225? 1250? 1275? 1,300? 1325? 1350? 1375? 1,400? 1425? 1450? 1475? 1,500? 1525? 1550? 1575? 1,600? 1625? 1650? 1675? 1,700? 1725? 1750? 1775? There's gotta be an easier way of doing this. 1,800? 18? 1825? 1850? 1875? 1,900? 1925? 1950? 1975? 2,000? 2,025? Uh, 2,050? 2,025, 2,050? 2,075? 3,000? Wait, is that right?
Yeah.
3,000, yeah, 3,000.
Mr. Kyle.
Yep, we're on you for three. 3,025? 3,050? No, 3,025. Going once, 3,025 going twice, sold, $3,025 to...
To Mr. Mastel?
Mr. Mastel. Might have a second career being an auctioneer. I can't think quick enough.
Good thing we didn't do a dollar.
Yeah, yeah, $1.
Depends on the property.
All right.
The second piece is record number 5232.
I don't think I have a picture of that one.
Yeah, you do.
I do?
Yep, I sent you all three of them.
Where is the...
This is in Wallace?
It's in Wallace. I think, believe it's near the elevator.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Okay.
Opening bid is $50 on this property.
Correct.
Yep, sir, what's your name?
Rob Gomes.
Okay, for now, we'll just go this way. We'll do the paperwork later. Okay. Opening bid is 50.
All right, so we'll do this in $25 increments too, just for the sake of moving things along. So $50, opening bid, 75? 50? 75? 75 going once? 75 going twice? Sold. I'm sorry, $50.
$50.
$50, I'm sorry. $50. I'm new at this, so I'm sorry. Yeah. $50 to you, all right? Yeah.
All right, the final piece is a piece in Elmira Township. The appraised value is $50, and that's the opening bid that we need to auction it off today.
All right, opening bid $50. Yeah, give me $50. Any opening bid?
See, it's that small red corner in the bottom right hand.
Tiny, tiny piece.
.14 acres.
On a fishing hole.
Yeah. And you got a beach with that, looks like. So $50 is the opening bid on that, so we'll start it at 50. Anybody wanna make a bid for 50?
Water Town Development Corporation, do you wanna bid on this little...
You're in.
$50? $50? No bid.
All right, if we don't receive a bid today, the board can, I believe, advertise that they will accept sealed bids on this, and then we can accept any price. But for today, no sale. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
And so they meet with the treasurer if they wanna take care of it now?
Yeah, we go over to the treasurer's office and tell them which piece you purchased and the amount.
All right, thanks Troy.
Thank you Troy.
You're welcome. I enjoyed that, thank you.
So we will move on to monthly reports. Extension is busy with 4H, so they will not be here today.
Correct.
And so we'll move to the veteran service officer with Todd. Good morning. He had a little cheat sheet for us to follow along with if we...
Turn your mic on there Todd. There you go.
He's got it.
Okay, good morning, everybody. We've seen a steady increase of veterans and family members with people feeling ready to venture out into the public. We've had, we currently have 44 claims in the process at different levels. Be whatever at the VA are still working them at our level. Also, several soldiers that just returned from Germany with the field artillery have been stopping in with their bonuses and applying for healthcare benefits. Shout out to JT in the back there for putting the announcement in the public opinion that we're seeking volunteer drivers. I just had, I had two people stop in this morning, one phone call and one stopped in. So hopefully, we'll see if that generates some interest to get some more volunteer drivers. Along with that, on Friday, Dakota News out of Aberdeen called me. There was a short segment on Friday night on the news, kind of addressing the need for volunteer drivers also with that. With COVID, the VA has had to adapt the change of their process of claims. They have started to outsource to contractors, which has led to some additional requirements and changes to the previous procedures. Nothing really from our end, except for maybe getting a few additional documents for veterans, their VA files to provide to the contractors. Attended Veterans Court on the 13th of July, continuing with my training and additional working with that group there. The CBOC is still open and continuing to increase back to 100% of operation. Currently, we have two veterans scheduled for VA appointment trips upcoming here in this month. They have increased the health or the protection level in the, for the drivers and the passengers by mandatory wearing a mask and use of hand sanitizer when they get in and out of the vehicle. That was a directive by the VA. South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs has conducted the interviews for the new field service officer for the northeast area of South Dakota. It's at the state level waiting for approval. We should hear something within the next week or so. Working with Natalie on updating our job descriptions in the office for Peg and myself. Future events, attend the Sea of Goodwill meeting on 14 August. I will be attending the state Veteran Service Office and the South Dakota Veterans Affairs Conference the 24th through the 27th of August in Pier. Peg will be staying back in Watertown to keep the office open while I'm gone. Discuss, when I'm out there, I'm gonna discuss the DAV vehicle process with the other county veteran service officers and kinda see what they're doing, how they're addressing that. The DAV application has not came out yet. I got something from the DAV, it came down in an email, and it shows the amount of volunteers that each state has, like from Iowa, Minnesota, Montana, all the surrounding states here. And there's a, it's a pretty obvious that the amount of volunteers that they had last year to what they have this year is reducing. So, you know, this is going forward as we look if we're gonna get a new DAV vehicle or not. Again, that goes back to, we have to have the volunteers to utilize that vehicle. So it'll be interesting to see with the data that was put in the newspaper and how many of these people that come forward here within the near future actually complete the step in how we go forward with that. But like for South Dakota, in 2019, they had roughly 135 volunteer drivers. Right now, this year, as of current, they have 78. So it's a pretty drastic reduction. Minnesota, 359, they're down to 277. Iowa was 233, they're down to 199. So I think it's a, how would you say that, a trend, trending down in volunteers from that standpoint. So just some data there on that. I will meet with the local commanders of the veterans organizations meeting tonight at the VFW. Other than that, are there any questions of me?
I would imagine that reduction of volunteers, you know, maybe after the two months that shut down for...
Yeah, yeah, but they, they are, I was just down there, they are starting to open back up.
The one in town?
Yeah, that's the CBOC, the one in town. Yeah, it is open, it is open. They are just, they're still doing all the blood draws that they never, they never stopped doing that. That was just on a one-on-one basis so they didn't have any more people in there. But their goal is to get back to 100% full operation, hopefully by the end of August, first part of September.
I had an appointment, and then they contracted it to a private. There was a mix-up, and it didn't work. And they said, well, I was supposed to get my eyes tested, and I still didn't have tested. You know, and finally, they said, well, you know, find one. Well, then, went to the, after that used to hit, had people call that they wouldn't accept veterans.
Hmm.
A scale, you know, so there's, there's all kinds of things you gotta jump through.
Yeah, that you, like I said, that contracting thing, you know, we've had to go back and get documents out of the VA file system to provide to the contractors. It's just a little more, it's more time consuming. It's a little frustrating for the veterans sometimes because it's, well, why am I going to a trailer in Brookings when I used to go to the CBOC or to the Sioux Falls VA clinic? So again, you know, it's, I've also noticed that in our claims, I noticed yesterday when I was going through some of the 44 claims that they've had sent out letters for the delay of claim processing because of COVID and whatnot. So, you know, we just keep trying to stay with the veterans, try to stay, keep them positive and saying, hey, just, you know, sometimes we're working with the government, it takes a little longer.
So those drivers is crucial then, sometimes for some of those opportunities and grants that we would receive.
Yeah, that's where, you know, we, I, I'm pretty sure, like, we talked about that grant through the DAV. When I talked to them the last time, you know, they, they pretty much said that, you know, if you apply, that should be pretty much a given from that standpoint. But, you know, again, we currently have, we've been utilizing three drivers. And we do that on a rotation basis for them, and they're doing a great job with that. We did lose one because of COVID. He just said, you know, with the, wearing the mask when I get in the vehicle, and he says, you know, I'm just gonna bow out for right now. The bad thing is that two of our current drivers go south for the winter. So then all of a sudden, we could be shorthanded. But like I said, we currently have four people that have shown, shown interest in it. I just wish I could speed the process up by, you know, when you tell them that, okay, there's, you know, six to seven, eight pieces of paper, medical history, background check, proof of insurance, and then you have to go to the VA for one trip for the physical and fingerprintings, then you have to go back to the VA again later for some additional training. It's two trips, and then basically, they, once they get the training done, every year, they have to come back and they have to show their proof of, proof of insurance, another physical. So it's just...
Yeah, it's quite a process.
Yes, and I haven't had an opportunity to, I know Brad over there at the Sheriff's Department utilizes some assistant drivers to transport stuff. This is just spitballing that, that thought process out there. If we decided that we didn't wanna go with a DAV, would we be able to maybe get somebody that would be a part-time county employee like what they have, or maybe his people would be able to say, then they would be driving a county vehicle. So that was that, that other thought process that, it's like, I just had need to get over there and talk to him about that, so.
During your state conference in Pier on the 24th through the 27th, be sure and bring that up. Find out what the other counties are running into. Maybe, you know, maybe the communication is broken down and people don't realize the problems that we're having here, you know, and, and along with that, take some suggestions. Like you said, could we work with the county, you know? I mean, could we combine forces or with the local transit system or whatever, you know?
Yep.
Take some ideas with you.
Yep, I will do that. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Todd? All right. Is Luke?
Do we wanna talk to his budget, or?
We've done his budget.
Oh, we did?
Yep.
So for Luke, the planning and zoning.
He's not be available until 10 o'clock. He's online with a meeting with Clark County right now.
All right. Well, then, let's move on to item number eight, action to approve a replacement resolution for CARES Act funding.
Initially, when we put this on the agenda, I was working with Greg Mog from First District. And when we passed the resolution, the first part of July or the end of June, we appointed Brenda within this resolution. In hindsight, we should have appointed myself because I'm the one who's gonna be signing everything and uploading the files. Since that time, or since we first discussed it with Greg last week, or I discussed it, it might not be a problem. So I'm gonna ask just to continue this till next week. We are having another Zoom meeting, and one of the representatives from the state of South Dakota will be on our Zoom meeting tomorrow, and we can go over this and see if we need to redo that or if it's workable the way it is. I'm still, apparently, I can still upload the data. I may need you to sign off on documents. So we'll, we'll see how much of a hassle that will be, and then we'll decide if we need this resolution.
All right, sounds good. So let's move on then to item number nine, action to approve a resolution to combine precincts for the 2020 general election.
This is something that we have done in the past. It just makes it more efficient to combine some of these precinct tables, especially when we have so many people voting by mail and also the people who will probably vote in office this time now that we're open. So by combining these precincts, it cuts down on the number of precinct workers I have to try and find, and it also keeps the precinct workers busier during the day and with more people to, to serve.
Where would those precincts be located then?
They'll be in their normal polling place.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just combining them within the polling place itself. And it's just, I think all of these involved are precincts at the extension building. None of the outlying areas, none of the rural areas.
Move to move, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. And that is in your packet, that information of which, which ones will be, yep, put there, so. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Item number 10, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Um, we do have one of those. I was not able to get it sent out to you. It just came yesterday, but it's an insurance reimbursement from Nationwide Insurance for the company who damaged our bridge. Was this out on Sioux County Road?
County Road 6.
Okay, County Road 6. Anyway, we have received insurance reimbursement in the amount of $10,014.27 that we can put back into the highways budget for the repairs that they paid for.
You need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Vandus and second by Gable. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. All right, item number 11, action to approve personnel changes. And we have two of them. And we have two of them.
Shane Yost has been a part-time deputy in the sheriff's office and he is being promoted to full-time. This is to fill the vacancy that we recently had when one of our full-time deputy sheriffs resigned. He will go to step three, 2301 an hour, and that was effective August 1st. The second one is the temporary hire that you approved last week at the highway department. Jeff Riley will be at step one, 1840, and the effective date is not filled in on my copy here. I do understand that he has worked one day already, I think it was last week.
Adam Chairman, could we take these separately?
Yes, we can, sorry, yes, we can. So let's take the deputy sheriff.
For Shane Yost.
For Shane Yost.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Vandusen. Any other discussion hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, so that motion carries. All right, now the personnel change for the highway temp help.
Could we go into executive session on this particular one?
Is this going to be on the procedure of how this happens or on the person, individual?
It's the procedure.
Okay, so the procedure, I don't think we can go into exec of how that goes. If it's on the person itself, that would qualify for an executive session. Is that correct?
That sounds right, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a procedural issue, not a personnel.
Yeah, but it's a procedural issue, that's something we would have to do in open session. If it's on the individual itself, that would qualify for an executive session.
Yeah, it's not a personnel issue, it is a procedural issue. I think that's the way the law reads.
Just so the, is the effective date not being filled in, is that the issue?
I'm not sure.
What's the procedural issue?
I'll move that we go into executive session for personnel issue.
But this isn't a personnel issue, this is a procedural issue.
He's already worked one day. So he's a county employee, if he's worked one day, that would be a personnel issue, correct?
Yep. If it's about the individual itself, if it's just on the procedure, I guess, I don't know, Charlie, what is your, what's your?
If it was a procedural or hire on the way it's hired, but, and I was, I would stand corrected. So it's, yes, I would, I would put it under a personnel issue then. Or I would second Myron's motion.
I just don't know if it qualifies, if it's about the procedure of how it was done, that isn't on the personnel.
I withdrew mine.
But why don't we, Madam Chair, if I could suggest what, we could, we could postpone this till later in the meeting and possibly after executive session at the end, maybe we could do it that way, just to, we have to.
Very good.
That's my, that's a suggestion.
I ain't taking the motion on the floor, though.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
I can rescind my motion.
Okay, you will, you're going to rescind your motion then?
Well, I don't want to, but I will.
Might make it easier.
Just withdraw.
Might make it easier.
Withdraw.
We could do it at the end.
Yeah, withdraw my motion.
Okay, and who seconded that, Charlie? You, okay with that?
I would concur, withdraw.
The thing is, is what we need to keep in mind when we go into executive sessions are certain things. If it's about the individual, that qualifies. If it's about the procedure of how it went about, that does not qualify. So we need to determine, is it on the individual or the procedure?
Well, we get there when we go into executive session. Let's just go on.
But you have to know before you go into executive session, the reason for going into.
If it's about procedure or if it's about the person, we need to know that. And from what I'm hearing, it is a procedure, not the person. Okay, item number 12, action to approve travel requests.
Two travel requests. Both individuals are requesting authorization to attend the South Dakota Counties Convention in Sioux Falls. It is the highway department, highway superintendent and the welfare director.
Motion approved.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Vandusen. Any discussion hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, so that motion carries. Item number 13. I can't think of any possible quorums, does anyone else have anything? Okay, any old business? I have a couple of things, I guess, well, maybe one is old, one is new. Our commissioner convention in September, the 13th and 14th, no, 14th and 15th. We really need to have a firm number. I do meet on Thursday as executive board because we need to decide then whether we will proceed with this or not according to numbers and whether it's fiscally feasible to do this. So I don't know if any of you are for sure on that or, I mean, we will take a yes, no and a maybe if it's not just a maybe to say maybe, but if you're really sitting on the fence.
Basically, I just need to hear from Myron and Charlie. Those are the only two I've not heard from, yes or no.
And mine was a no.
Yours is a no.
I will not be attending.
And I will not be attending.
Okay, so then we'll get that information for the meeting on Thursday. Anyone else have any old business?
Madam Chair, just real quick, we follow up, remember we talked about IT managed services, oh, probably about a month ago. And so we've been working on that ongoing. The sheriff did go with managed services on his own, he had budgeted for that. So, and then we had another meeting with representatives from Connecting Point, so Cindy and I did. And so I think we, we, I guess we can talk about it next week on the agenda. I don't know if we need to authorize that expense on the agenda, but we're, the, the issue is, should we go ahead and do that for the rest of the county offices? Because, you know, it is kind of, you get the managed services, so you get better IT service, which is a lot cheaper than hiring an IT individual. But then also, the, the big thing is if something goes wrong, like a malware attack or ransomware attack, then, then they, they work through that with you as opposed to having to pay for that on the spot. So that would be included. So that's kind of the, the issue there. So just a FYI for now, but that's, and I, I have the quote, I just have to send it out to everybody. They gave me a new quote that would cover just the offices in question since the sheriff already went with IT managed services, so.
All right, so that's something that will be on the agenda going forward then and make a decision.
We need to decide also where to budget for it.
Yeah, because here, yeah, the issue is for some of the bigger offices, it's, it seems, you know, with servers and things, it makes a lot of sense, they're calling fairly frequently. And then, and they're dealing with backups and things like that. For some of the smaller offices, you know, it, it just looks like you're just paying an extra $40 a month to take care of this computer. But what you, what you get out of that is that, is not having to hire an IT professional. So it might make sense just to, and that, some of that deals with the way legislative.
So I guess one of my questions is periodically we have to call in and say, our email is down, the internet is down. Will this cover those calls? Could you find?
I think it depends on whose fault it is. I mean, if it's just something that they can come and deal with, it would cover it. If it's the internet service provider's fault, then that's their problem, so, you know, that's.
When that happens typically.
If it's a.
We do get charged, we have gotten charged, yes.
So when it has happened typically in the past, is it because of the, the provider or because?
IT staff.
Um, you know, I don't know for sure, you know, whose fault it was.
If, but if you call in, if, say if you call in, my understanding is, we can, we can ask for that clarification. But my understanding is if you're calling in an IT professional that deals with your stuff, your hardware or your software, other than printers, this would not cover printers, but that's not a significant thing, then your managed services contract would cover it in general.
And I think previously, some of the problems have been something with our server, something got locked up or something like that.
Then that would be something that the managed services ought to cover, if it's, now if it's.
It hasn't happened lately and it's not frequent.
No, if it's, if it's the provider and, you know, I suppose the managed service provider wants to say, no, it wasn't, wasn't, you know, our stuff's fault, then, then, you know, then.
I had another instance where I keep getting an email from a vendor that I do not want to purchase from. So I have tried blocking him. He still comes through. He's supposed to go right to my junk mail, he still comes through. So I have asked Connecting Point to look at that and they're kind of dumbfounded by.
Some, yeah, some of those.
It's an AOL email and it is how he's getting around.
There's probably.
They're trying to block him, but it just keeps coming through. It's not a local vendor, by the way, it's not a local vendor. It is somebody from out of town that I do not purchase from and I, I don't want to purchase from this individual and having a hard time.
Maybe we need to hire their IT person.
I think he's his own IT person, to tell you the truth, but, um, anyway.
Not if he's using AOL.
And, and I do get charged for those kinds of things, too. So maybe that would be.
Yeah, I would think that, I think that would be, their attempts to fix that.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Yeah, so that's.
So you'll, yeah, get that other information and, okay. All right. Any other old business? I guess we, Cindy did forward that one email about that resolution from Jason Claude with the wind energy. I don't know if that's any thoughts, I mean, it's not on the agenda, if we want to put it on the agenda or kick it around for a while. It's not till, well, it's coming up in August, but.
Yeah, I think we can put it on the agenda for.
Put it on the agenda.
No, because it's August, is it the 14th?
Okay.
So, yeah, put it on for next week then and.
You bet.
Sounds good.
All right, for an item. Commissioner Gable, do you have any input you wanted to say?
Well, I just, I, I'm not a fan of, it's, we're talking about a commemorative thing for a, for a, you know, business that we're trying to balance with our zoning laws. We're trying to balance between the concerns of wind and those that don't want the wind towers. So I guess I'm, I'm not a fan of it, I'll, you know, if we want to have it on the agenda, then that's fine.
I did talk to Dool County, they did not receive one, so that seems kind of odd to me. And I haven't talked to Grant yet, so I'm not sure how they're determining who they're sending them to, so. All right, new business, anyone have any new business?
Just one quick thing for the, we, we haven't had a meeting of the Behavioral Health and Justice Working Group, so I'm trying to get that together. That's the, AKA the stepping up initiative, been working with Sarah to try to find a good date. We're now working with the, the other, rest of the crowd that has normally participated in that. One thing that kind of came up that's, that we at least need to be aware of in that committee is, we forgot the name of it, but essentially it's a, it's a, an electronic way for a law enforcement officer to provide some on-the-spot, you know, mental health counseling if needed. So it's, yeah, it's basically an IP, tablet computer of some sort. And it would, it would, it would kind of complement the CIT program quite a bit. So talk about something that could reduce, you know, incarcerating people with mental health issues when they don't need to be in the jail. That would be something that could avoid that, seems to be. So it's something for that, it's definitely a topic for that group. And then just kind of going through the, you know, the, the list of people that are involved in this circle of, you know, that give options to law enforcement and the justice system to avoid incarcerating somebody that might have a, a mental health issue. So that's.
Isn't that pilot, isn't it a pilot program somewhere?
Yeah, as I understand it.
Came from Justice Gilbertson on the Supreme Court.
So Vera is running with it, so Vera has the grant from, I think, the Helmsley Trust. And so it's moving pretty fast with, and they're working with the sheriff's office. And they want to use, I believe, if I understand it right, it's already working in Roberts County or close to that point. And they're looking at us, too, as a pilot, so.
Basically, what they can do is they can connect with a mental health professional over like FaceTime or something like that, so the mental health professional can talk to the person in crisis at that time.
It's kind of like what we have in the sheriff's office now with his new processes that he uses.
Yeah, but this could happen, you know, without a trip to the jail.
Out in the field, yeah.
Like out in the field, yeah.
Before they get there, yes.
Yeah, that's pretty slick.
All right, another thing, too, is the Sioux Valley Commissioner District, we have been asked to try to resume those meetings. I think we would have received an email through First District. You know, we need to get that happening soon in August. You know, they're just trying to find out, do we want to do that in person or Zoom? So if you can respond back for Suzie, unless you guys already have, let Cindy know or somebody so that they will know how to proceed on that one as well. But we've been strongly encouraged to try to get that one in. So, all right, any other new business?
Just one thing, and it's not really comical business, but it is. Call a heightened awareness to, this is 4H Achievement Week. And not only in Cottington County, but in several counties around. And we do have restrictions, there is some restrictions on, everything's changed in how it's presented for 4H and exhibits, et cetera. But just to call an awareness to it, it's still going on.
As soon as we adjourn, I am headed to Hamlin County to judge down there today. I had Cottington yesterday, it was Cottington and Brookings yesterday. And it's a little bit different, it's good and bad in that I've been doing this for many, many, many years. And I always look forward to being, they call it interview judging, where you had the, the youngster or the participant right across the table from you and you interviewed as you judged and asked about the project and how it went and so on and so forth. While we, when we walk into the room this year, the projects are there, we just look at the projects, judge them and move on. It goes faster this year, but we still miss that face-to-face contact. And I always cherish that, that was always kind of the highlight of, you know, kids don't lie. Kids tell it just the way it is. And that's, that's what I think is the, the wonderful thing about that. But it's good, it's, it's going. And several of these youngsters, they do plan on going to the state fair. There's several that are not, I don't know how well that state fair is going to go this year. But there are some that are planning on taking their projects to the state fair, and that's good.
Well, the nice thing about 4H in closing is it not only involves kids, but it includes the parents. And it also, from my standpoint, includes the grandparents, so it's multi-generational.
Yep. All right. I think that was kind of something for the open, anyone else have anything for the open? I don't have anything as well, so now we're come to this part of the meeting on that personnel change, I guess. If it's on procedure, that doesn't qualify, so procedure needs to be discussed.
Well, I think.
I don't know.
It is, is the question, you don't quite know if it's a procedural issue, but you don't want to, since we're talking about a person, a personal action about a particular person.
So maybe.
For clarification sake, it's still, maybe still a personnel issue, just, just to, you know.
On second thought, I feel very comfortable putting it under a personnel issue.
Is that a motion?
I would make that a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second under personnel.
The motion is to go into executive session.
Into executive session under personnel. All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in exec, I guess we'll have, we'll come out and there will be, we will have Luke on and then we will make a decision on this.
Why is Todd here?
Is Todd on? Well, I wonder, yeah, I guess we could maybe get.